Good evening. On behalf of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce, welcome to this evening's candidate's forum for the 2022 primary election. This candidate's forum features individuals running for Scottsbluff County Commissioner in District Number Five. This candidate's forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. Along with my co-chair, Don Wolfe, my name is Bill Boyer, and we appreciate you joining us. We would like to thank the Rural Radio Scottsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, as well as Scottsbluff County Clerk Kelly Sides for hosting us this evening in the Commissioner's Room. As a reminder, there are three Republican candidates running for Scottsbluff County Commissioner in District Number Five. In the May 10th primary election, you will be allowed to vote for one candidate. The top vote getter in the primary election will advance to the November general election. There are no candidates from any other political party running this year, so most likely the winning candidate will be unopposed in the general election. Before we meet the candidates, I'd like to go over the format for this forum. Before we began recording, the candidates flipped a coin to determine the order they would be seated and introduced. We'll begin by asking a question, and each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond. Then there will be an optional 30-second rebuttal for each candidate to answer following the answers. After the final question, each candidate will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. There are timers in the room, and each candidate has been informed of the format and the rules prior to tonight. None of the questions have been given to the candidates in advance. Now let's meet the candidates with us here tonight for this forum, for Scottsbluff County Commissioner, District Number Five. Jessica Loughlin and Mark Harris. Kealan Stray was unable to attend tonight's forum. Per the rules, statements can be read for those candidates who are unable to attend. Here is that statement. "Sorry, I am unable to attend tonight's forum as I have prior commitments. I am running for county commissioner because I believe it is time for the younger generation to get involved in the community. After listening to complaints from citizens, I decided I could try to help find solutions rather than sitting on the sidelines. I was born and raised in Scottsbluff. After graduating high school, I moved to Arizona for two years, then decided it was time to move home to Scottsbluff to raise my family. Since then, I've been in the process of taking over and expanding a family business that has been active in the community for 30 years. Thanks for your consideration and good luck to all the candidates." Now let's begin with the first question for our candidates here tonight. We'll begin with you, Jessica. Explain what motivated you to run for election.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Chamber, the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and to the Rural Radio Network for all of this and making this possible. Now, I've kept my pulse on the county commissioners over the last year, and I've been coming to the commissioner meetings now for some time. I've been really dismayed with the lack of professionalism, and I've been concerned with the way the commissioners have treated the employees, and really frustrated with some of the policy decisions. As a lawyer, I'm familiar with the laws that govern the commissioner and the commissioners in this board, as well as the laws and the regulations that will come up as my time as county commissioner. I have personal management experience that I will use those skills that I learned, working with employees, appointed officials, and with elected officials. I can bring a level of professionalism that this board is currently lacking. Also, I'm a homeowner and a citizen of your district, and I understand the frustration with the ever-growing property taxes in our area, and I will work to reduce property taxes while making sure that we enjoy the same level of services that we have grown accustomed to in this county. I will commit to making sure everyone has equal access to government, and that their input and their questions are answered and appreciated. As county commissioner, I will take steps to ensure that county government works efficiently, avoid wasteful spending, and to promote respectful coordination between elected officials."
Thank you. Mark, explain what motivated you to run for reelection.
Sure. So, I've run for election, I think this is the fifth time now, and all of the times that I've ran, I simply want to give back to our community. I hope that I can give back because the community certainly has given a lot to me, given a lot to my family, and I want to be able to give back and to serve. The majority of us all want to live in a community that's safe, one that's affordable, one that provides opportunities, which normally means jobs, provides community, and by community I mean friends, neighbors, family, businesses, churches, schools, education in all forms. And I want to be a part of helping make those things happen. It's important to me that those things thrive, and one of the ways I think we can do that is by encouraging business, and economic development is an important thing for me. Strong fiscal conservatism is important to me as well. I believe that all law-abiding citizens should be treated equally and fairly, and I will work vigorously to lower property tax, and that's most of the reasons of why I ran.
Jessica, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just would like to say that I, too, like some of our candidates, are born and raised in Nebraska. I understand community, I understand rural community and what that means, what it means to be a citizen of Nebraska in a small town. I've been in this particular community now for about six years. Prior to that, I was a police officer in Kimball. So I've worked in government most of my life, my adult life, my career, and I understand how government works, and I want to make sure that I bring that level of understanding to this board. Thank you.
Mark, anything else you'd like to add to that question? Okay, I'll address the next question to you first.
Okay.
What areas of county government interest you the most, and why?
Well, I would say that first is the property tax issue. It's been one of the things that has been on my mind from clear back in 1988 when I ran the first time for Scottsbluff City Council. And we had a little bit different scenario in the city of Scottsbluff in that we had the ability to levy a sales tax, and that worked well. We don't have that ability here. It's made things more difficult. But the fact is, is that Scottsbluff is the third highest property tax levy in the state, only outdone by the two metro areas, Omaha and Lincoln, and so it's frustrating that we can't get our property tax levy down to a lower level, more comparable to others in the rural areas of the state. So that's one. Economic development certainly is part of that. The more we can create jobs and bring businesses in, the more we can spread that tax base out. I'm a believer that less government and less red tape is generally best, and I believe that one of the things is crime in our area, and I like to be tough on crime and like to be sure that we don't have things going on in our community that distract from our children especially.
Jessica, what areas of county government interest you the most, and why?
Well, for this election, taxes interest me the most. That's been one of my biggest concerns, and while I appreciate what Mr. Harris says, he has been on the board for quite some time, and that has not seemed to change. I think we need some fresh eyes on this problem. Maybe we can come up with some fresh solutions. I'm also really interested in transparency and access to government. I've been participating in government, like I said, most of my career. Prior to that, I've been, as a child, I went before commissioner and county city meetings because I wanted to be active in the government since a very young age, and I want to make sure that children and the youth in this area know that they can come in to these meetings as well. I'm also interested in the management because I think that ties into the taxes. The commissioner's job needs to be managing the elected officials and the appointed officials to make sure that budgets are set reasonably. I'm also very interested in professionalism. I think professionalism in government is something that needs to be at the utmost priority for local governments because we deal directly with the public on a daily basis, and we need to make sure we're not alienating anybody. I'm very interested in seeing this community grow. I have a young child here, and I want this to be a wonderful community for her as she gets older. Thank you.
Mark, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Jessica, the next question's for you.
Yes.
Paid holidays for employees continues to be a subject of debate between the board and the personnel committee. How many paid holidays should staff receive per year, and why?
I'm really glad you asked this question. Thank you. This has been a topic of great debate amongst the commissioners and amongst the staff. I do believe that there should be the 13 holidays, and the reason I believe that is the commissioners, I'm sorry, the county staff wants that. We have a county staff that is very unsatisfied right now with the commissioners. They've come in repeatedly to commissioner meetings and have said and expressed their frustrations and their disgruntledness. Adding an extra day is not going to change the taxes or the budgets. Whether the person is here working on a day when the state has holidays off is not going to change, I apologize, they're going to be paid whether they're here working on a day that the state has a holiday, or whether they're at home. So I think that they should have those 13 days. I've spoke repeatedly about this at the commissioner meetings, and there was a proposal up at the last commissioner meeting, and I believe Mr. Harris had voted yes on it, actually, and I agree with him on that vote of yes. I think that the county employees deserve more, and they're not getting paid like the private sector, so comparing them to the private sector is not appropriate, and they should get that extra holiday. Thank you.
Mark, how many paid holidays should staff receive per year, and why?
You know, I've been on the same page for the three years that I've been a county commissioner, and that's 12. I've said 12, I still believe 12. I have asked on occasion from some staff, elected officials, what they thought, and they said 14, actually. And, you know, it was my suggestion that in an effort to move things along, that we possibly give a half a day at Christmas Eve with the thought of ironing this out and putting it to bed once and for all if we could agree on the 12, but that didn't happen at the last meeting, and so we didn't get it done. And I, you know, I would just say that if, there's no doubt that in any organization there's issues with staff being frustrated from time to time, but the issue was mentioned about the morale being down, and, you know, one of the things, I guess, that I decided was that just because each time morale is down, for whatever the reason, doesn't mean that all of a sudden, well, I guess we'll give another holiday, try and get that morale picked back up again. That's just not the way life works, and if we're going to keep our property taxes in check, then we have to make certain decisions. It's not easy to say no. It's easy to say yes.
Thank you, Mark. Jessica, anything you'd like to add?
I apologize, he didn't vote yes. What I meant was he had thrown out a solution for that Christmas holiday is what I was thinking of on Christmas Eve, having a half of a day, and I appreciate commissioners that can try and work with employees to come up with reasonable solutions. Here's the thing, though, I used to be a county, deputy county attorney in this county, and I've recently gone into private practice, and yes, I don't get as many paid holidays now, but the wages that you get working for the county are much lower than that of the private sector. Thank you.
Mark, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Mark, the next question is for you. When it comes to administration of the departments reporting to the board, what is the proper level of oversight that commissioners should exercise?
Well, of course, we have two distinct different situations, and that's, of course, the elected officials, I believe, I want to say nine elected officials, such as the Treasurers Office and Registered Deeds and all the elected ones. We have very little, if any, oversight over those offices. The only real thing that we have by statute is we hold the key to the purse strings, and so we do get to set their budgets, but as far as other activities and how they're ran, we don't. Now, we do have then many other departments that we do have some direct control over, and so those would be all other departments, such as some of the biggest ones is the Roads Department, the Detention Center. The couple that I'm involved with is the Buildings and Grounds, and then also the Planning and Building Department, but those we have more direct supervision over, and each commissioner is assigned about three, four, five departments to be their direct supervisor and do their direct reviews annually, and so that's the way the system is set up.
Thanks, Mark. Jessica, when it comes to administration of the departments reporting to the board, what is the proper level of oversight that commissioners should exercise?
Well, I believe that the commissioners need to be working with the elected officials to make sure they have meaningful access to the board, so that the elected officials have their finger on the pulse when they come in here to talk. I think that they need to know what's going on, what decisions are on the table, and there needs to be more communication between the county commissioners and the elected officials. While I agree with Mr. Harris that the board doesn't oversee them the way they do the appointed officials, they do have some level of management. They are supposed to be the body of government that's looked up to for those decision-making questions that come up from the other elected officials. And so if you build a really good relationship with those people who are in those positions, I don't think that you have to have micromanagement of them. As far as the appointed officials, again, I understand there's a higher level of management, and again, I don't think micromanagement is appropriate. I don't know how to build a road, so if the roads superintendent comes in and wants to describe to me how to build the road, I would defer to them. I'm going to listen to them and take their expert advice. I understand there are times when there's going to be disagreements, and that's when your professionalism and your personnel management skills would come into play. You don't have to be heavy-handed, and you don't have to micromanage to get the job done. Thank you.
Mark, anything you'd like to add?
No, we'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Jessica, we'll start with you with the next question. You just talked about roads. The county has hundreds of miles of paved and gravel roadways, many of which could use improvement. What ideas do you have to speed up that process?
Well, things just got a little hairier with the commissioner meeting a couple of days ago. We now have a vacancy in the Roads Department, which is going to be a major hindrance on that progress. It was my understanding that there were some things that were in play to make sure that the roads got taken care of in a more timely fashion when problems got called in, and there were some other plans in place for improvement that are now probably going to be stalled. So my first order of business in this particular area would be to hire somebody who can manage that Roads Department, manage it efficiently, and make sure that we can get the roads where they need to be in this county. I personally have been stuck on a county road in the mud after a heavy rain, and I remember how frustrated I felt. I can't imagine what the people who live out on those county roads deal with every time it rains or heavy snows. We have to figure it out, but we need leadership in those departments with those skills that know how to do that, because that is not my area of expertise. But I would defer to somebody and their expertise in managing that. Thank you.
Mark, again, the question, the county has hundreds of miles of paved and gravel roadways, many of which could use improvement. What ideas do you have to speed up that process?
Well, a couple of things that I've been against, I will tell you, and that's borrowing money. You know, it was not long ago, just before I was on the commissioners, that the county bonded to, I believe, in a 25 or 30-year bond, one of the paving projects going out north of Scottsbluff. And then I asked, what is the life of that road? And they said about 15 years. So we bonded and borrowed money to fix that road, and we'll have to be fixing it again before it's ever paid off. So one of the things we haven't done is borrowed money since that time, and I don't really plan to. The Stiegel Road got in a lot worse shape than it ever should have, but by trying to cut back in other areas, we were able to save enough, save enough money to get the Stiegel Road done. And I think that's, again, we have to say no to certain projects, and I know that Jessica would like to say yes to everything that comes along, but you just can't do that. We already have $12 million that we asked for in property tax, and we look for other ways to fund things and get the roads taken care of.
Jessica?
Well, I don't say yes to every project or every idea that comes my way, but asking a lawyer how to build a road or maintain a gravel road is not probably going to get you very far. So I, using the skills that I have, would reach out to people who do have those skills, and I would listen to them. I would make sure that we were doing projects that were manageable within our budget, and I would make sure that the citizens of this county are getting the services they deserve at a reasonable cost.
Mark, anything you'd like to add?
I would only say that I hope that what has been here in the past has been professional people, and even with those professional people, you still have times and places where someone gets stuck in the mud, but these county roads are extremely critical to our farm and ranch people, and they have to be maintained well. It's a big, big part of our business in Scottsbluff County, and we have to maintain them and keep them in good enough shape for commerce to proceed.
We're not coming back to roads after this. Jessica, anything else you want to ask or add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mark, let's talk about another subject. What role should the county play when it comes to development of workforce and workforce housing?
Well, you know, I'm involved a little bit with the things going on with Twin Cities Development, as I said on that board. I would only tell you that the housing, the workforce housing, in my opinion, housing is driven by demand, and it's a supply and demand business, and when the demand is there, the private sector will step up and they will build what's needed. And some would say, yeah, but it won't be fast enough, and so we need to help with all kinds of different programs or other things, but I'm convinced that it's a supply and demand business, and I don't mind encouraging everything we can. I think a couple of things, if we just stay out of the way, things will happen in that area that needs to be, but I'm not interested in getting involved in some type of financial incentives that the county would be involved with. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Jessica, what role should the county play when it comes to development of workforce and workforce housing?
Well, I do believe that the county needs to be encouraging businesses to come here. We have a lot of things in this community that can pull businesses in. We are a major hub for the Panhandle, and so if we could reach out to the right businesses and get some other markets here, I think that would be beneficial. I do agree that the housing issue is a supply and demand issue. I don't think that the county should be building houses or being, funding any of that. I would say, I was a police officer in Kimball, Nebraska, which most of you know is just south of here, and in the 70s they had the oil boom, and there was a huge housing crisis when that happened, and people were moving in to houses and overoccupying them. And then as soon as the oil boom was over, everybody flooded out, and the town became much smaller. So a get-rich-quick scheme isn't going to work for Scottsbluff. In fact, I think it would be harmful. What we need is slow growth that is consistent and steady. Slow and steady would win the race in this, and I would work with our industry leaders to promote professional training in the Panhandle, to encourage young professionals to come in and stay in this area. If we can attract young professionals and keep them here, I think that would be huge for our community.
Okay, Jessica, our next question's for you. If a horse racing track and casino are built outside of Gearing, the county stands to receive a considerable amount of funding from those industries, what would be the best use of such revenue?
Oh, wow. So I haven't actually thought about that because we've been in such a revenue crunch for so long. I think that we need to work on infrastructure in this community. It's my understanding from talking with the former Roads Department, Linda, that there's a lot of bridges in this community, and there's a lot of roads that need to be worked on, maintained, repaired, and possibly some new construction. So the infrastructure would always be probably my go-to on that if we had extra money. I haven't looked too much into how those laws will delegate how that money is spent through the communities, and sometimes when there's things like that, there's restrictions on how the board can use that money. So obviously, that would dictate my decision in that. But at this point, I'm just going to stick with infrastructure is going to be my big.
Okay. Mark, if the county receives a considerable amount of funding from that project, what would be the best use of such revenues?
Well, I agree that the Roads area is the one that we would look at first, and I think that the Roads Department is an area that has continually received less than what's needed, yet, again, we're pushed up against our budget limits, our mill levy limits, and so we don't have room to grow that. In fact, my preference is to shrink that, and so I think that would be a logical choice. You know, we've, at this point in time, we have no idea how soon that might happen, and the new things that are happening now at the legislature, whether or not that's going to happen anytime soon. We certainly can't bank on that at this point, but I think that's the first place that has to be looked. I'm not, one of the things that I would be very cautious of, and that's creating new services that just cost us more money, so the simple story I would say is, let's use it for property tax relief. Give it back to the people in Scottsbluff County.
Jessica, anything you'd like to add?
Again, some of those funds can be used for property tax relief. I would agree that would be a great place to put it if that's allowed, if we get it. One of the things I think would be important for the board to be cautious of is not to bank on that money, because it wouldn't be money, especially at the beginning. We would want to make sure we were getting a stable income before we considered that financial security for this community. I do support a racetrack going in if it comes to that, but at this point, I'm more concerned about the budget with the money we have right now, and that's where I spent most of my time focused.
Mark, anything else?
I would only say about the racetrack itself, and that's that, you know, back in the early days when I was on Scottsbluff City Council and mayor of Scottsbluff, in the early days when I was on Scotts Bluff City Council and Mayor of Scotts Bluff, you know, we were dealing with keynote at that time, and the new development of having keynote. And I would only tell you that my personal belief is I'm not a major proponent of gambling, period. I would prefer that those things not be significant in our community. But I also know that they're popular, and there's lots of people wanting that. And so, I have not done anything substantial to stand in the way of those types of things.
Thank you. Mark, next question, we'll start with you. Commissioners also sit as the Board of Equalization. What do you believe is the proper balance to strike when considering valuation protests?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question, but, you know, the, simply, the Commissioners sit, and since I've been here, I think the first year we did it, we had three to four days worth of protest. The second year that I was involved, we had, I believe, seven or eight days of protest, which I think was a large amount. It was when things were being changed at the state level that caused the county assessor to have to relook at some things, and it caused lots of discontent. But, all we can simply do is, is be here to listen to the concerns of the person, and our job is to try and equalize. And so, we want to be sure that no one individual is being taxed more for their property compared to like-kind properties. And quite honestly, that's not an easy task. There are no exact like-kind properties. They're similar properties. And then, we have to make judgment calls, just like the assessors do. And they do it at a higher professional level than we do, but we have to take a look at those, and to the best extent that we can, look at, at comparisons. Fortunately, you know, although I was never what I call in the real estate business, I've had a real estate license for thirty years, and I think all of that helps me understand the process well, as far as equalizing values.
Jessica, what do you believe is the proper balance to strike when considering valuation protests?
Thank you. So, I have a unique perspective on this. As a deputy county attorney, I was delegated to go to the Turk meetings and the Turk hearings. That's the Tax Equalization and Review Committee. So, after somebody does a protest here in the Commissioner, with the Commissioners, if they still disagree, then they go to Turk. And so, I got the opportunity of working with Angie Dillman, who is the county assessor. I also got to work with the state agencies who ran Turk. And we went out and we valued properties. We would reassess the value. If somebody wanted to know why their valuation was what it was, we would provide them spreadsheets and breakdowns of that. I went out and inspected properties with Angie and the state people to see that the valuation was, in fact, correct of where we got. I think the biggest, most important piece of that protest process is making sure that we have the values of the property correct. Allowing the citizens to come in and show the board why they think that the assessed value is not the assessed value. Typically, they feel like it was assessed high, not low, if they're coming in. So, why do they think that their value is not what Ms. Dillman's office says it is? And so, I think that the Board needs to be cognizant of the actual values of the properties in this community, and I have experience doing that.
Mark, anything you'd like to add?
I would only say that while it's true that some of the ultimate equalization and protest end up going to Turk, there are very few. Most of them are dealt with right here at the Commissioner level. And the, but it is very important that people be encouraged to get into the county assessor's office early if they have concerns, and be sure that their data on the, on their house is correct. Square footages are correct. And of course, it's nice today because we have the assessor online, and we can go in there and check all of our own data real easily. Well, it's easy for most people. It's not easy for everyone. And so, that's why we still need personnel here to help them walk through that process.
Jessica, anything you'd like to add?
I would agree that the Turk hearings and the Turk protests were the more difficult ones, the ones, most of them are settled at the Commissioner level. I just have experience dealing with those difficult ones, and I understand the process going forward. So, I, I think that I would bring some value to the Board when it comes to making those protest determinations.
Okay, Jessica, we hit on this briefly earlier, but many of the top administrative positions in the county are also elected. So, what would you do to foster a spirit of cooperation with those officials?
No, I've worked with most of those officials through my capacity as deputy county attorney when I was doing that. And I've continued to work with almost all of them as a private attorney, actually. I work at the Register of Deeds regularly. I work with the assessor's office regularly. I work with the county clerk. The clerk of the district court is, of course, huge. I work with Dave Uvings, the county attorney. I don't work with the surveyor so much, but I work with these people on a regular basis, and I've built relationships with them, and I've built lasting relationships with them. They know where I stand. I know where they stand. And I really believe that I have a working relationship with the people who are elected to this community. Right now, I know the Register of Deeds has somebody running against her, but I think all the other positions are going to be held by the same people. And that relationship going forward for the next four years is going to be instrumental in making sure that this county runs smoothly, efficiently, and cost-effectively.
Mark, what would you do to foster a spirit of cooperation with those other elected offices?
You know, first, I would say that the relationship between those elected officials was, has been in bad shape for quite some time. Now, that's not to say all of them. I think even, so that was prior to me being on, but since I've been on, there's, oh, six, eight that I get along with well. There are some that seem to want to be more difficult, and the, seem to ask for more and want more out of the Commissioners than what we're normally willing to give. And that, again, there's times when we have to say no. And again, we're pushed up against our maximum mill levy. We're the third highest in the state. So, somewhere, some of this stuff has to be pulled back. And they don't like that always, but that's the, the cold hard facts, is that we can't always say yes and accomplish things in all the areas that we need to. So, it's difficult sometimes with a few, but for the most part, I mean, I met early on with even some of those that, what I would call, that was difficult as described by some of the other Commissioners at the time. And I met early on with them with a hope that we could get along well. In some cases, that's worked well, and some it hasn't.
Jessica, anything you'd like to add?
I would. You know, we're a team. It's not us versus them. That goes for, it's not citizens versus elected officials, and it's not Board versus elected officials. If you elect me to the Commissioner, I'm an elected official as well. And Mr. Harris keeps saying, sometimes you have to say no, and I always want to say yes, or sometimes you have to say no, and you want to say yes. But there's another question you can ask, and that's, how can we work together to get it done so that we can both meet our goals? And that is something that this Board has not been doing. Those, I can't remember the word that was just used to describe them, but hard to get along with the people that are elected. It's because they're not being asked, well, how can we help you so you can help us? And that needs to be the question that's asked.
Mark, anything you'd like to add?
Oh, I know that she would like to say that, and I don't think she knows at all what kind of discussions that we've had, whether it be right here in open session, whether it be in private conversations or whatever. My goal, I believe it's the goal of all the Commissioners, at least from what I've seen, is to try and work together. And in the, in the overall scheme of things, eighty to ninety percent of what we do, we work together on things. But there is some ten percent or so that sometimes gets contentious, and it's not, not always easy, but sometimes certain decisions have to be made. And that's, it can't always be yes. And I just say that.
Jessica, I'll give you one more chance if you have anything else. Good?
I, I agree. It can't always be yes. It can't always be no. Sometimes it has to be how.
Okay. We'll move to another topic, Mark. What is your stance on unfunded state and federal mandates, and why do you feel that way?
Well, I'm against them. We had the same issue when I was on Scotts Bluff City Council, where we would have mandates come down for, at that time, we were dealing with quite a few environmental issues that the government would bring and tell us we had to meet new water quality issues, new wastewater requirements, all kinds of different things. And they would put those requirements on us, and then expect us to pay for them. Us, meaning the taxpayers. And simply put, so they could make the rule and then cause someone else to pay. And the someone else was, was the people in that community. And I was unhappy about it then. I was against it then. I'm extremely pleased that at least at the state level, that that's being addressed and maybe even voted upon to, as far as being a constitutional amendment at some point. And I'd love for that to happen. I think that affects the things at the state level. I'm not sure that that gets us all the way into the federal level of things, but I'm certainly against unfunded mandates.
All right. Last question, Jessica. At the end of a four-year term, if you're elected, how would you define success?
Lower taxes for the people in my district, government accessibility, making sure that we're live streaming and we have access, having younger people involved in government decision-making, and having a greater economic, community tourism, and having, well, you said this is an easier question. I just want to keep going. I would like to see all of my agenda items met. That would be success to me. But taxes, and then the professionalism, and all of those components being worked into the Board would be success.
Mark, at the end of a four-year term, and you're reelected, how would you define success?
Well, I think, again, taxes being lower, mill levies being lower. You know, it's easy to leave mill levies where they're at, and then let valuations go up, and then it doesn't solve any of the spending issues. Because it's really a spending issue that we, that we really need to talk about in many cases. But, so, the property tax, certainly having the community be a great place to live and work, including new jobs, more jobs, more economic development, more business, is certainly important. I think continuing with those conservative ways of life that are important to our community, things like being pro-life, and things like being, the strong family values, and having a good place for our kids to grow up and go to school, things like Second Amendment rights, that they're protected in all ways. The, making sure that those things continue to the, to the best extent that we can do that on a county level. I realize that some of these things are above county-level politics, but we still need to be part of encouraging those things to happen.
Jessica, anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, we're to our closing statements. Each of you will have sixty seconds to make a closing statement to the voters. And, Mark, you're up next, so we'll start with you.
So, I think that one of the biggest issues here is that the differences between Jessica and I is that I believe that I'm a, you know, a forty-four-year resident of Scotts Bluff with a conservative record from way back, since nineteen eighty-eight, when I ran the first time, that my record you can look at, and, and you can know that I have a conservative point of view. And that, I'm not sure that's always been the case with Jessica. Again, she talks about coming to the meetings, and she has. One of the meetings she came to, she testified against the red flag law, which is gun rights, or part of the gun right law. And so, she did that. She's also, as I looked at her voting record, she's been Democrat for a long time, and then, right here, when it comes election time, or not all that long ago, switched to Republican, I think. She did that to be elected. And I'm just concerned that her overall decision-making process, in what I've seen her testify here, and the things that she supports here, would suggest to me it's more on the liberal side than it is conservative. And I ask you to declare that, that you didn't really mean it when you, when you testified against the red flag law.
Mark, time's up. Jessica, you have sixty seconds for a closing statement.
So, I do need to address the red flag law. I was a law enforcement officer for some time, and the red flag law that was, the way it was being presented here, was talking about mentally ill people and the law enforcement not being able to take their guns for a short period of time. I have seen suicide as a law enforcement officer. I have seen accidental discharges, negligent discharges of firearms. I'm an advocate gun rights supporter. I own firearms. I regularly shoot my firearms. I believe full-heartedly in the Second Amendment. All the amendments need full support of everybody in order to survive. And on this issue, I do believe law enforcement sometimes has to make very difficult decisions about the Second Amendment, as they do the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment, Sixth Amendment, and the First Amendment. I see my time is up. I spent most of my time replying to that. May I have some additional time?
We'll give you thirty seconds for a statement.
I appreciate that. One of the things I wanted to say was that I hear you to the Commission, I'm sorry, to the county employees. I hear you to the jail staff. When you're here at the meetings, and you're telling the Commissioners, we don't trust you, we have problems, we're losing faith, I hear you. And the Commission recently told Linda that if I were you, I would just say, I hear you, and I'm sorry, and this is how I'm going to make it right. But yet, when you come to them and address a problem, they simply defend their actions without asking you how to make it right. And I will listen to you, and I will make it right.
Okay, we've come to the end. We want to thank both of our candidates running tonight for Scotts Bluff County Commission, District Five, for participating in the forum. We hope this helps you in deciding who you wish to vote for. As a reminder, in the May tenth primary election, you'll be allowed to vote for one candidate. The top vote getter in the primary election will advance to the November general election, most likely unopposed as no other candidates have filed from other parties. This candidate's forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scotts Bluff-Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. We, again, would like to thank the Rural Radio Scotts Bluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, the timers for volunteering, the chamber staff, and Scotts Bluff County Clerk Kelly Sides for hosting us this evening in the Commissioners' Room. On behalf of the Scotts Bluff-Gearing United Chamber of Commerce's On behalf of the Scotts Bluff-Gearing United Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee, and for my co-chair, Don Wolf, I'm Bill Boyer. Thanks again for joining us, and remember to get out and vote.